Okay. All right, we're gonna deal with this projector as it is. It's not that strong and it's also got some smudge on the thing, so it's a little bit out of focus. Sorry about that. Just you will get fit to your string room. Uh, sorry, some housekeeping things first. I'd like to very, very, very much thank Meadville Public Library for having us here after hours. And having your staff on hand for us. We appreciate it. There are a number of events flyers that you might see. I like, just to plug them, I think there's a lot of really cool stuff coming up. So please check this out, so that this is not the most populous event that the public library has.
Yeah.
Thank you. Secondly, for emergency stuff, there is a restroom on the main floor and then a second restroom on the floor below that, what they call the ground floor. If anybody needs an elevator for some reason and you haven't found it, it's that way to the left, hidden in the back. And we have a hard stop tonight at 8:20. So we can have all the staff that are here out by 8:30, possibly. We'll see. Maybe we'll just grab Gabby later. Gabby in the back there in the community librarian who's helping us out with this. We appreciate it. Is there anything that you'd like to say before we begin?
No, I think you covered everything. Other than check out the library website, the event, all of it. You've got good stuff, it's all free. Yep.
Okay. Great. So we have a very rich format, but we do hope to stick to A format today. I'm going to introduce some of the things that I've been presenting to council over the past couple of meetings with some information that I think is cool for all of you. After we go through this PowerPoint, the necessary evil of a PowerPoint, we'll be able to open it up to some listening, so we can digest what we've just heard and hopefully come to some approach, some common understandings about the state of parking in the city and what might possibilities be for the future. Tim, do you have anything to say?
Not right now.
Okay. This is Tim Groves, our finance director. If you haven't met him before, I'm Peter Grella. I'm the city planner. I came on the city one and a half years ago. So please forgive me if I don't have the long institutional memory of many of you in this room and from our other council members and colleagues here. Okay? But I'm doing my best. If there's anything that I'm doing where you can't hear me in the back because I have a small voice, this will run out in about 40 minutes. Just please let me know. Okay. Do we understand so far? Okay, good, thumbs up. Actually, who do we have in the room? This might help me guide some things. Business owners, raise hands. Okay. Plain old residents, raise hands. People who are simply interested in the topic or had nowhere to be on. All right. Lastly, any former council members or former city staff? Okay. All right, cool. So, thank you for your patience as we go through this. So, to put it plainly, we are in what I think we can call a pickle. That's not just my words. I'm quoting an article from the Meadville Tribune. Thank you to whoever called "parking pickle." Many Meadville spaces rundown garage being demolished. That's not the Market Square Garage. That's an article from the Mill Run and DEP Garage. So if there's anything that I can point out is that the problem that we're facing is recurring and it's old. And as far as I could delve back to the year 2000 in our budget records, what's the thing I said before? History doesn't repeat, but it rhymes? Something like that? We might be actually really close to it this way of repeating. We'll see. This is the impetus for the Market Square Parking Garage in the year 2000. The Market Square Project was the one that...
Peter, can you speak up a little bit, please?
Thank you. I'm doing my best.
Okay.
The Market Square Revitalization Project from the year 2000, titled Impact Meadville, was the one that demolished and replaced three city parking lots in order to make room and space for the Market Square Parking Garage. The townhouses that are there, the redevelopment of the Kepler Hotel into residential condominium units and then the reconstruction of the Kepler Commercial Areas. So that was a big, mighty, mighty effort and also a big risk. Part of the point of selling that project was to have a parking authority, in my understanding, and somebody can correct me if I'm off this, with the removal of those three surface lots and construction of the parking garage. The parking garage would have been operated by the city of Meadville. And this would have netted only 44 new spaces if it had only constructed a three-level parking garage as was originally designed. Okay. So, as we know, that project was never brought completely to fruition. Okay? We got a six-level parking garage with the help of $2 million of grants and upwards of $2 million of debt that the city assumed. We call that tax increment financing, which relies on the repayment of debt through new accessible development that is made available by the project. The problem with the redevelopment in this area is that there are, I think it's six townhouses that weren't developed, which would have been accessible. Three buildings, two-to-three story buildings, that would have been built in the original proposal, but were not built, but were accessible if the original project had been brought through to completion. So already, in the year 2004 and onwards, at the time the parking garage in its construction was completed, we are missing a lot of the accessible new development that was intended to raise tax revenue to pay back the loan on the parking garage. It's a complicated way of financing projects. There's a risk to it. The risk was taken. But if you see where the Market Square Rain Garden is, that was supposed to be a building. The PNC parking lot, that was supposed to be a building. The parking lot behind Dr. Decker's office, that was supposed to be a building. All right. This is a lot of numbers.
You can't see it anyway.
Yeah, it's okay. The point is that with Tim's help, I was able to go back to the year 2000 for all of the budget items in our parking fund. And I've been able to compare them forward. So just so you know...
Is this what was on the city site? That your other presentation, are those numbers?
No.
No. So this is not, okay.
Right.
Different ones?
Yep. I've had to do a lot of things quickly to prepare this for you. So what I've done here is as much homework as I can, taking all of the published numbers into the budgets, back to the year 2000, apples to apples, put them against, adjust them for inflation, so we have something to compare with today as I talk about the history of our finances. These are not, what you see up here, the actual face value numbers that are in the budgets, because I've adjusted it to 2022 dollars. So we're not talking about devalued money. And so that we're talking on the same level. Okay? So...
We can't do anything with the projector?
I know.
We can't.
It's, this is just demonstration.
Okay. Got it.
We will post this on the website.
Which one?
City website?
Yes.
Okay. The point of this is, if you could see it, you'll see that in the year 2000, the ending balance adjusted to 2022 dollars in a parking fund is $1,468,295. And it posted net loss of revenue of $20,000 that year. In 2001, net loss of revenue, 76,000. 2002, 119,000 loss. 2003, 140,000 loss. 2004, 178,000 loss, all the way through 2008. The loss of over $150,000 in 2022 dollars per year, until in 2008, the ending balance of the parking fund was $12. So it's $9 face value. Remember, I adjusted it to 2022. That's $12. Okay. That's what this slide shows. This is the helpful one to visualize that. So forget the slides with the budgets. That's just a thing because I visualize things in Excel spreadsheets. But here's graph that, this is zero dollars. Everything below zero dollars is negative. This is negative net revenue at $200,000. In 2008, when the parking fund hit virtually zero. These three here, orange is the operating expenses. This is operating revenue. And this is debt service. Debt service is basically a proportion of our fees, of our taxes that are going into repaying what we bought in infrastructure.
I have one question. Why did whoever's in charge never go after Yoder for the money that was paid by the Kepler condo association? To... We paid Yoder. I live at the Kepler. We paid Yoder. That money was never collected. We paid 40 dollars a month each one of us. And...
For parking?
For parking. And to my knowledge, it was never collected.
This is where your long history and my new entry into this?
Well, I've been there since 2005.
Right. So, yeah, this will be what I'd like to learn about, understanding later. But right now, I have no answer.
Just a quick, Jack, the reason what happened, I believe, Varian, if you can correct me, but when we did the sale, that was part of the wholesale agreement and that was part of that.
It's for him to walk away?
Yeah, exactly. There was a lot to it.
And that was the purchase of the commercial at that time?
Yep.
So then they get credited towards that?
So, but yeah, that's what happened with that.
One more question and then hopefully, if you have pen or paper or notes, you can write down your questions and we'll address some of them later. But for continuity's sake.
When you're, the net loss that you're talking about that's accrued and accelerated and accrued to deplete that, that's because the buildings were not developed?
No. Can you repeat questions for us? Sure. So the question was, is the net loss that I'm demonstrating because those buildings were not developed? And the answer is no, at least not completely. Because the stack of money that's supposed to have been generated, the amount of taxes from those buildings, which I don't have the amount of what they estimated that could have been, that's one portion of the stack. Whereas the other portion is taxes, fees, meter revenues, or, you know, meter revenues, and then rentals plus grants. So that's...
Those are income streams, though.
Yes, that's...
Right.
Yeah, that's an entire layer of revenue on revenue on revenue on revenue.
What he's talking about is the tax incrementing financing. That program worked tremendously. So that was the county, the city, and the school's taxes going into this TIF to pay the debt, which worked perfectly. What he's saying is, after it ended, we were hoping to have more assessed value so that the county, school, and city would get more taxes. That didn't happen. But the TIF worked, we paid back the debt. The only portion of the debt that's still outstanding is the parking fund debt. That was, you haven't got that paid yet?
No.
So when he gets to that. But basically, the TIF worked.
Yeah. So we're getting ahead of the narrative here, sorry? No, it's okay. I understand. So in 2008, and this, Sarah, is what you're referring to, part of this.
Okay, one of them.
Yeah.
The other's a bunch that you guys...
At the same time, the parking fund was approaching a depletion, the city of Meadville engaged Desmond Associates to produce a parking study. This is the one that you might have seen on the city website before, which demonstrated in a very limited study that at least in their observation, the usage at peak hours on that Wednesday for the city's metered and leased lots and metered on-street parking maxed out at 53.7 percent, sorry, accumulatively. So there's lots of meters that maxed out above that and towards 80 percent. But the lots that we have lowered the total bulk rate of all the parking that Meadville was providing, so that at 11 o'clock to 12 o'clock on the day they did the study, only 53.7 percent of all spaces the city was providing was being used.
So the study was a one-day study?
Yes, which was very limited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many storefronts were empty during that time period?
Sorry?
How many storefronts were empty during that time period?
I have no idea.
Right. Does anybody know the answer to that?
A lot.
A lot. So there was a huge crash that happened in the city of Meadville between 2006 and 2009.
Yep.
So you guys did this parking study during the time period when there was nobody there shopping?
Well, so Peter has done a study in 2008.
Yep, so this is...
Let it continue.
It's not scientifically valid, because it's just one day. What is that?
I know.
This is not a study that we did that we're not basing information off of today. He's providing the context within the past. When Desmond provided a recommendation in 2008 to raise parking to 50 cents, this is what this outside consultant did. Peter has done a lot more than that, but we'll keep, he's getting there. He's holding up to it.
Yeah.
Maybe, Peter, let's just kind of get to kind of where we're at now in the present, as much as, I think that's what folks are interested in, though.
Yes, we will get there as quickly as I can.
Let's read the room here.
All right. Yes, 2008, parking fund depleted. Desmond said 50 cents per hour. What the city did in 2008, 2009 was sell a portion of the Park Avenue Central Lot to Erie Bank. This is now Erie Bank. So we reduced the parking there, but it allowed us to get an infusion of about $500,000 in 2022 to shore up the parking fund. That's the bump in purple there. That spike. I want to emphasize, though, that that was not because of any meter revenues or anything. That was a sale of real estate. And you'll see that purple bump in 2008 is not matched by any new revenues in the blue line, below the dotted line, at zero. And unfortunately, that bump by the real estate sale was also approaching depletion by 2014. And you know, 2014, 2015 is when the city dealt with this, the Mill Run Parking Lot. At that time, repairing, sorry, this parking garage, the Mill Run Parking Deck and DEP, would have cost upwards of $3 million, if my memory is correct. City council at that time said $3 million is too much to justify this. And the choice was to demolish this parking lot and to replace it with the surface lot. All told, the demolition was $300, approaching $400,000, with another $730,000 to produce this parking lot. So that's the decision, $1 million to have this lot versus $3 million plus ongoing maintenance to demolish the Mill Run Lot. So just as a matter of history, notice that the financial choices in 2008 were to demolish, sorry, were to demolish a building and remove city parking to sell real estate. And in 2015, effective 2017, the same financial choice was made that made more sense to demolish a building, remove parking, and build a surface parking lot. Who owns that lot now? The city owns this lot. And that's metered? There are nine spaces in it which are metered. Yep?
The rest is leased.
Yes, the rest is leased to... To the apartment building that used to be owned by Brad? Partly to the apartment building, partly to DEP, partly to maybe others of you in this room. I understand, but you get, they have a... How do you indicate that those are the parking metered people that should be there? Or they have a sticker? I mean, anybody could park there? How do you determine that, who parks there? We'll get that towards the end. I look forward to it. All right. So we're getting towards the end here, where we've had a negative revenue stream until just about now. About 2015, where we've reduced the liabilities and then we have a positive revenue stream, partially because with the reduction of parking spaces available to DEP there, we were able to shift what we took from the DEP Mill Run Lot and displace those parking spaces to the parking garage at Market Square, which you can tell where I'm headed, because this is a problem, because at that time, Market Square Parking Garage was known to be deteriorating. And the choice was made in 2015 to let it continue to deteriorate to the point where it would be demolished. So that's, I'm explaining the pickle where we're at today. We have displaced here. One parking garage goes down. Those displaced are going to another parking garage that needs some maintenance, demolition, or rebuilding at a cost, which I hope these graphs I've showed you so far, we have not accumulated the funds to deal with that cost immediately. Okay. So this graph carries us all the way to 2023. There we see purple line, it's the loss of operating revenue because we've removed parking spaces around the 2015 era. We've got a bump in this, partially. That's because of increased rates. Are part of our operating revenues, about $36,000 a year. Up until 2017, we're part of tax increment financing. So that's the taxes that have been reintroduced to the parking fund to pay for our investments.
Could you please point to 2015? I can't see it. Right there. Okay, thank you.
15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and this fuzzy area, 23, where the projected revenues at the 2023 budget were at net zero, effectively. And we had a kitty of just over $100,000 in the parking fund. So that's where we're at. And $100,000 is pretty slight, knowing that at 20 years ago, there was about $1.4 million. Okay. So that's the history of where we're at, in all transparency. And so I don't really know what the graph from 2024 to 2023, '6, will look at. Tim, is there anything I should add to that?
Nope, I think we're good.
Okay. So, the unscientific parking study, yes, that also bothered the heck out of me. Right? For a number of reasons. I won't get into all of those reasons, except I tried to recreate that a little bit better, my own. Like the newspaper pointed out last time, I mapped about 3,000 parking spaces, not in this area, but between North Street and Poplar Street, South Main Street, including all of the Diamond and the ones outside the YMCA, to the downtown mall. I've mapped them all. I've mapped who has what spots where. I've broken every parking space in Parking Bank into about 250 separate distinct units, so that last year and ongoing, I can go around town with my clipboard, Sarah, like you saw me the other day.
I saw you a couple times. I was like, what the hell is he doing? Meaning, watch him like, what is Peter doing?
What I was doing was taking a challenge to figure out on a peak Thursday, where people were parking and why, at the time when there was a class at Yoga Spa, at the time there was a class at Bill Lawrence Fitness, at the time when Julian's was open, and then seeing the dip around the sandwich shop and the rest of it. So I'm continuing that study repeatedly. I had hoped to go maybe 49 times on a seven-by-seven grid of times between 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And on holidays, maybe if you saw the last slide, I went out there at about 6:30 during a snowstorm after Thanksgiving weekend. I went during thunder in City, so I can get some snapshots of the year to see where, who is parking where and when. And there is not a whole bunch of things. And you have a different experience of that than I do, because when I'm out there with clipboard, I'm getting a snapshot over one hour of the entire city, where you are just looking for the best, most convenient parking spot and you don't see that. So we see different things when we try to do a scientific study like that. This will never be pure science, but that's just to demonstrate that I've tried to do this and that's why this slide that you might have seen in previous presentation was marked direct on, because this is ongoing and I'm not making any completely distinct conclusions about who parks where, when, why, how many rates. This is just what I've observed. And observations from a clipboard and actual experience are different. So I'm aware of that. But here's the rub. We've gone through the city, the history of the city's finances and the parking fund. The parking fund is supposed to be self-financed. Okay? Not supposed to have, you know, this is a policy choice, but basically, all revenues are supposed to feed back into improving the parking system. You've seen that we have a decline in accumulation of net losses over those years. The sum of those net losses from 2000 to 2022, '23 is about $2,940,000.
Which time?
2000 to 2023. So while we still have money in that, that's the accumulated net loss of, you know, it's the accumulated budget deficits that end up being what, how we've depleted the resources right now. This is all just to say that we don't have that much money to just up and do anything whatsoever, any changes with parking. So that's what the pickle is, that we're trying to figure out. And we have not made decisions about how to address that pickle yet. And I promise, that will be the last time tonight I say the word pickle. The problem now is the parking garage. Because according to the city's engineers or the chain engineers' estimates, there is a limited lifespan left on that parking garage, for which, I've shown you, we have no dedicated resources to address. If the initial estimates are, you know, spot-on, then at the low end, we will have to find an additional $100,000 per year to address the parking garage, no matter what we do with it. On the high-ish end, I actually kind of split the difference on this. If the original assessments that Ashley Porter said were correct that rehabilitating the parking garage and all of its concrete decks, which remember, the concrete is structural, it is not superficial, that might be between $5 to $10 million. I split the difference. And if we funded this with a 20-year bond, my guess is, like, everything being wildly assumptive, we'd still need to come up with an additional $450,000 in revenue a year if we wanted to get to net zero on it.
Peter?
Yes?
For the public's information, that cost per month does not include the existing debt. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So in other words, there'd be another $120 or $130 a month for the parking garage cost, which means a per-space cost of $280 per month, roughly.
Right. This scenario is a sunk cost scenario that I've put together. If we say, bygones are bygones, history, you know, the future starts today. What's done is done. This is the additional that we have not yet committed to. But if you look at the debt summary in the city's budget, the parking fund has 700,000, approaching $700,000 of outstanding principal on the loan that the city took out in 2004 to build the parking garage. It has about another $1 million of outstanding principal in our debt summary that we still have to pay back through 2036, something like that, I'm operating from memory, that we still have to pay back for a combination of demolishing the Mill Run Parking Garage and rehabilitating the Market Square Parking Deck ramps temporarily for, I forget, it was like $282,000, $500,000. Again, operating from memory. Because I feel like I'm gonna get the shepherd's crook pretty soon if I keep talking. But yes, we still have parking debt from actions that we've already taken. It's on the book. It's on the books at the back end of our budget. So this is just to let you know, we're in a predicament. Okay.
Can I, can I add something there?
Uh, sure, briefly, we'll let Tim get in there.
When the work was done, what, three years ago down there when they re, I'm in that parking garage every single day. I've been there since 2005. I talked to the people that, that did the work down there and the guy that was the head guy, I talked to him. He said that that parking garage structurally is way overbuilt. So why, the, the basic thing is cement work. He said the garage itself is way overbuilt. And that was from somebody that knows, not me.
Okay. Uh, I don't have that context. So I'm still waiting for Ashley Porter's, you know, the engineer's assessment on the condition of the garage right now. It's just helpful to know that a steel I-beam, uh, pillar frame garage that has a hand poured structural concrete element is not very common around this area, which is why the mill run garage you'll see was, uh, all of a concrete cement exterior, not, uh, surface I-beams. But yeah, there's a thing with the moisture in there and I don't want to speak beyond my expertise until, like you say, I'll defer to the qualified engineer that gives us a conditions report on it, which we hope will be in the next couple months. Okay, so Tim, I'm going to hand this over to you.
Rena, you wanna take the wheel here? Well, I'll talk, you, you just have to run the thing.
I can run it.
Well, you wouldn't be able to read it because I didn't bring my glasses, so.
Okay.
All right.
I can't see it anymore.
Oh, I tried to read it in here.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Peter, go to the next one.
All right. Well, see, look, we're, we're, we're trying to keep our expenses low with the projector. All right.
So probably that's what everybody's here for. As you heard, we might go from 25 cents to 50 cents for parking meters. So, uh, somebody asked us to say, what happens if we don't do the quarter? Uh, the quarter, I estimate it to be about 72,000 dollars, uh, of extra revenue. Uh, that's only about 75% of what doubling would be. So we took a little, uh, rough estimate and we reduced it. So if we don't do the quarter an hour, we said, what if we just use taxes? Let's tax everybody in town at a half a mil. Half a mil's worth about 75,000. So taxes would be increased by half a mil, that's one, one option. And then we'll get to the next slide to see what that means. Or we do a downtown business improvement district. Rena, would you please tell them what a downtown business district is?
I will, when we get to that slide.
Oh, all right.
We've got the taxes.
Okay, let's talk about the taxes, Peter, let's go, the next slide.
Sure. And I have a question, Tim, about taxes.
Okay.
All right, how much is our current mileage for, uh, for capital, uh, capital improvements?
Zero out of the general fund. We don't have any monies in the general fund for capital improvements.
Right.
Our capital improvements are done through borrowings.
Okay, and that's because parking fund is self-financed?
Parking fund is enterprise fund and it stands on its own.
Yeah, okay.
So what we said was if we incre- increased taxes by half a mil, we had some fun with some numbers, you probably can't read this, of course, but over here, if we took the assessed value of 25,000, which incredibly is our average, that's $12.50 increase. And what we said was, if I took a quarter to come downtown to park, I could do that 50 times. So the resident that lives out of town, or up, up the street, wants to drive downtown, they could do that 50 times for $12.50. The actual cost of parking, which would be the tax increase plus the quarter they're putting in the meter already, is $25. So just to put it in context.
And that's just for an hour's worth of parking.
Yeah, an hour's worth of parking. So we also did it for a $50,000 home, $100,000 home. So somebody that has a $100,000 assessed value home, half a mil is a hundred dollars. They could come downtown 200 times and...
That should be a hundred.
Yeah, that should be a hundred. So that's all, we just did some, some mathematics. If in fact we increased taxes throughout town based on our assessed value that hasn't changed since 1987.
It's been a quarter since 87?
Uh, no, it's been a quarter, I'm almost positive since at least 2000. Maybe our former mayor could remember. But when I first got here in 1989, we did have nickels and dimes that could go in the meters. Uh, but I think there's been a quarter probably since at least 2000. So I'd say at least 22 to 24 years it's been a quarter. Go to the next slide. So this is the business improvement district that Rena will explain.
Hi, yeah, uh, I'm Rena. Uh, I'm the community development director for the city. Uh, a business improvement district is actually recommended in the city's strategic management planning report um, that the city underwent in 2020. Um, this program, the strategic management planning program comes about, um, for financially distressed communities and cities as an intervention method. And so the point of that program and plan and report is to try to find, uh, ways to help the city not be so financially distressed. Um, and one of the recommendations again was for, was to establish a business improvement district. Um, pretty much any municipality in Pennsylvania has the ability, the authority to establish one of these. Um, so that is a defined commercial area um, where businesses essentially are paying a fee to fund very specific projects and additional services just within that defined area that goes beyond routine municipal operations. So this is not to fund the work that streets departments are already doing, not to fund work of fire, police, but to say, it could fund free parking within that, um, that commercial area.
Could or do?
Could or do?
It could, it would be up to the, um, the business improvement district to determine what it wants to do with those funds. So some businesses use it for facade improvements, for, um, upgraded street lights, for aesthetic improvements to beautify the area. Again, things that go beyond just regular routine municipal operation. And so those funds would only go to those specific projects. But so property taxes would still be, uh, paid by all those commercial businesses. But then there would be that additional fee, which is essentially another tax because one of the ways to determine that fee is based off of the assessed value of those commercial buildings. Um, and so that's a way that, you know, any special projects or improvements within the commercial area can be funded. Uh, this is a mechanism through which to do that. The stamp, um, report recommended that a downtown development corporation um, could be the administrator of this kind of, uh, program. But of course, there would have to, this wouldn't be done unless there was interest from the business community to do this because there, you know, it wouldn't be successful otherwise.
Are you talking about commercial property owners or commercial property owners and businesses within those?
Just the commercial property owners because it, it's based off of the assessed property value of, um, the, the, the commercial buildings.
Which they will forward on to the renters.
Yay!
So... So, you say the reward fee, is it a 50 cent fee?
Oh, no. It would, again, it's, it would be determined based off of what projects would that defined commercial area want to do? How much are those projects going to cost? Then that would have to be divided amongst whatever the total assessed value of the commercial buildings within that defined area. So say you want to do a program that costs $2 million, well then that's gonna have to be spread out somehow amongst, so it's very dependent based on the particular. So if you wanted to say, hey, we want free parking all within, uh, the downtown district, well then we would have to see how much money we would lose from having free parking 24/7. So then that would essentially be the cost of that project and then that would have to be shared out amongst the, the, uh, the buildings. Um, so again, these are, uh, other options for ways to try to offset the cost of, uh, increasing the parking meter fee an extra 25 cents. Um, and so these are ways that are now being shifted on to either all, um, property owners within the city or all, um, uh, commercial property owners within a district rather than on the user that is shopping downtown or doing business downtown.
Rena, with the business and just, if you had a business improvement district that, uh, let's say started at North Street and came on down, that's going to include tax exempts, this building?
Yes.
City Hall, the courthouse?
Yes, so tax exempts are still exempt in the business improvement district. Yep, that's correct. Unfortunately, however, however you want, however you want to say it. They are exempt.
Anyhow, it's just, it's just an idea to explain that, that's another option that we would go.
That could be explored. Um, then this slide, Tim can kind of walk through, so I'm sure. Another question on a lot of people's minds is if the parking fund is not currently self-sustaining, if we're talking about we're gonna have to raise the parking meter fee or raise taxes or do this business improvement district, why don't we just do away with it all together and just have non-metered parking? Uh, and Tim can kind of walk us through the complications of no metered parking and also that the parking fund does not go just for meters.
So again, get rid of the parking fund altogether. Uh, the potential complications obviously is that downtown parking becomes a free-for-all, uh, parking turnover is decreased, downtown employees can park in front of their businesses. I believe Council Monroe was on council when we tried Chestnut Street for free parking. It was mad chaos. Uh, business owner A would park in business owner B's pot and vice versa and pretty much trying to chalk tires and trying to do, the enforcement was chaotic and it just wouldn't work. Uh, we just couldn't get most of the business owners to realize that they're, they're goofing themselves by parking in front of their business.
And what, what year was that?
1997.
97? Oh, thank you, Jim. I knew it was in the 90s.
Actually, six bucks.
So it's, it's not easy to do. Uh, with the loss of the parking fund though, we do have the parking lots. Uh, we have the management of the reserve lots, the overhead and the existing debt service for the garage. So we really can't just say, let's get rid of the parking fund and let everybody just park wherever they feel like. Uh, there's still costs to be done, so that's where we're at.
And you, uh, talked with Lindy, I'm sure many of you know Lindy.
Yeah, I'm sure you all know Lindy.
She's very nice. Uh, about what it would take to do enforcement without leaders and how that's a lot more resource-intensive enforcement measure. We would likely need to hire another enforcement officer to be out more consistently all the time, tracking, you know, doing the tires, they have digital methods, you don't have to literally chalk the tires anymore. Um, but, uh, non-metered parking doesn't, what's that?
Shouldn't we have that now? Shouldn't we have somebody full-time deep on the street? Lindy's full-time, but she's three quarters of her time in the office.
Right, so that's part of what the parking fund goes to is for training, she works in the office.
And then Mr. Joe is only part-time a few days a week. There's, it's unreal, it's an unrealistic expectation to put on parking authority because, well, they, they aren't there. Mr. Joe's like...
Good job, they get these.
Don't exceed your two hours, right?
That, um, uh...
Yeah, we've heard both sides of that, that we do too much of it and some people say we don't do enough.
Because are we losing on money on ride fees?
Well, understand the parking enforcement is not the parking fund.
Yeah, I got that, yeah, yeah.
That is the general fund only. So the general fund pays for the parking enforcement, also gets a revenue for the parking enforcement. That pretty much is a net break even every year. Uh, so all they're, all we're doing is trying to make people do the two hours and, and comply with the, with the rules. That's all it is.
But we can't because we only have somebody part-time on the...
Well, we have a full-time Lindy and she's out there as much as she can be.
Right, agree.
And then Joe is our part-time and he's out there and I think Mary Ann, I thought we felt like we were trying to cover as much area as we could.
So I, I call...
Then we might be wrong.
Yeah, I call, I speak to Lindy almost weekly.
Oh, okay.
About people who take advantage of that two-hour thing, right? And I, she is so wonderful and comes down and, and does her digital talking and will help you. But like, I have to call and request because it's an unrealistic expectation that she can be both in the office and out on the street.
Can I ask what area you're talking about, just so I know in my mind?
Sure, yeah, yeah. I own 945 through 949 Market Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, but like, there's just no, there's so much that the city misses out on because Mr. Joe's only part-time.
Right, again, some people are saying we're out there too much and we shouldn't do that and people don't want to come downtown, they're not gonna get a ticket. So we gotta weigh that out.
I mean, it's real simple, let your meter run out and you get a ticket or exceed the two-hour time.
Yeah.
But there are people who take advantage of that two-hour time because they know Mr. Joe's on the, on the street in the afternoon.
Okay, I, I think, uh, yours and yours, uh, that you, the others seem to be somewhat related. So that might be a topic, I mean, you had a question, the Carhartt thing, about how enforcement happens in our lots.
In what show, your lots, yeah.
Yeah, so those two related things about the chopping and then lot enforcement, we can probably get into that into, uh, discussion afterwards.
Yep.
I don't have any more slides.
We're done.
We have one more slide that I think is pretty nice. So we just want you to know, don't you walk away, Rena. So a quarter in 2000 is equivalent to a quarter and two dimes in today's dollars. So just wanted to let you know, the quarter you spent in 2000 now would cost you 45 cents, so.
Has minimum wage gone up since then?
I don't know that, that's not my job. I would have to say didn't. We sure spent seven and a quarter forever.
Okay.
So that's all we have, unless you guys have questions, that we'll listen. And bottom, are you gonna write those questions down or?
Sure.
All right, so, uh, even for myself, because, uh, I'm the, I'm, I'm the Thanksgiving turkey that volunteered for the chopping block, uh, here, it's, uh, it's really difficult for me to listen to more than one person talking at a time. I split my attention, so if I'm trying to write down notes and everything, uh, if, yes, we can do the hand raising thing and, uh, be, go back to elementary school when you were all the teacher's joys. Uh, sure, not Jim, he was a terror. Yeah, he was always trying to correct the teacher. Sure. Annoying, okay, uh, Sarah?
To start? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I made a handout too. Um, so I did the math according to what you had talked about, about $70,000, which is, yes, which was my half as well. So what I did is I actually looked, that, so that is per, you'll see, I have all my math. So in, I'm gonna give it as a group, so in that bid district that we talked about, right? So there's actually only about, and I counted using your thing that you had in your...
Uh huh.
Yep, about 140 spots. That's it, 140. Which represents 4.6% of all of the available spots that you had on your thing, right? So that's not a lot of spots. Um, and, okay, so if we do the math and so that was utilizing all the slides that you had given, um, to before, right? So that was the one, 2008 one that sounds like it's unnecessary to have. Like, we can, like, that one that, from the one-day study, right? That shouldn't really actually be in there. I mean, I don't know, I should, I think it's still, but... So if we look at your revenue increase, so you're looking at 140 spots at 50 cents an hour, nine hours a day, that's assuming, you know, nine hours a day, five days a week, because Saturdays and Sundays, whatever, 45 weeks, because again, we do the free parking during the holidays. So that's $141,750. But according to your walking survey, to that survey, only half of them are being used at a given time, right?
Uh, well...
50% are being used at peak time. There's 50% that are unused, correct?
So there's, first of all, I haven't seen any...
Yeah, that's fine, so 50% of that were being used because of that 2008 study that you brought up
that was done one day, half of them were not being used. Okay, so let's assume...
Okay, so let's assume there's only half being used. So, then that's seventy, so that's seventy spots being used, fifty cents an hour, all that. So, we get to about seventy thousand dollars, which was what you had said about seventy thousand dollars.
I just wanna make sure, are you talking about on-street parking?
On-street parking within the bid.
And that, but I'm asking Peter, you're talking about fifty percent of the on-street parking on Chestnut Street not being used?
Not being used.
No, no.
Okay, that's the difference.
Okay, but according to your slide, it was only fifty per, the two thousand eight study, only fifty percent were being used, which was information that you gave.
Yes.
Okay, so let's just say fifty percent, even though we all know as business owners, it's more than that. But let's just say devil's advocate, only half are being used. So that's seventy thousand dollars, okay? Which is basically, if we're only keeping it twenty-five cents, that's thirty-five thousand, that's a year. But, the biggest thing that I have a problem with is your loss. Like, we're losing so much money, and why are we losing so, like, it looks like seventy-five percent is being used, not paying back the parking garage, but also paying for all this maintenance stuff. So essentially, when it all comes down to it, according to my math, the profit is actually nine thousand dollars.
Absolutely, it's breaking even.
So we're, we're, for fifty cents, as business owners, fifty cents, business owners, all the city is gonna get in profit is nine thousand dollars, and is it worth it? Is my question.
I think if we looked at the budget, I'd have a net balance of ninety thousand if we followed the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Okay, well, I had pulled up those numbers that were on your thing.
Yeah, he didn't have the final budget number, so... But with the increase in the, the flat rate, I'm sorry, uh, we increased that by ten dollars, and then the proposed increase to go to a quarter would have netted us an extra ninety thousand, uh, that we did not allocate to any other main...
But that's assuming that half of the parking meters are being used at a given time. So it's not ninety thousand, it's actually forty-five, because we're saying that only half are being used.
No, that's based on actual money received.
Actually, Tim, your budget, your budget online is eighty-six thousand dollars for everything, lots, meters, the, the grant, it's not just, she's talking about the parking meters.
Just the meters within the bid.
Which is fifty-two thousand dollars according to your budget.
Yep, yep.
Right, so...
But that's actual money, that's not saying I'm only gonna get half the fifty-two. That's actually based on what we're doing.
I'm pulling the fifty, right, I'm pulling that, so it's actually, then, we made a hundred something, because that's assuming that only half of the meters are being used.
You know, maybe, if I can, maybe you're getting stuck on this two thousand eight study done one day.
What I'm doing is utilizing the data that he gave me, gave us.
What I understood Peter to say was this study that he's doing now is providing different input.
Yes, I agree with the gentleman.
And you're disregarding that, because he really hasn't told us what the input is yet.
Yeah, I can, I can get to that, thank you. So, if I have your things here, and I think you, in the back of the taxi cab, had a thing. Um, so the number of parking spaces that, at two thousand eight, they take a look at, was only in those city-controlled spots. All of these spaces that I have been looking at, I have been trying to include all of the metered, all of the leased spots, some un-metered, free spots that are on-street, such as the six, seven spaces on Art Street across from the Whole Health Joint Replacement that are un-metered, plus those spots that are for private or patron parking. So this is very completionist about all of the parking in the city, because I also think the two thousand eight study was very flawed, and that's why I'm not relying on it. However, it is historical context to see, like, how things happened. And I know that relying on things from two thousand eight, when, you know, the economy crashed, uh, isn't necessarily the, it, well, it's not what to base things on today. Which is why I'm redoing the thing with, uh, let's say, more rigor. You know, unlike a consultant that comes in for a specific period of time, I can go downtown during lunch and get this throughout the year, throughout the month, different kinds of weather, different events, and hopefully, over time, have a more robust understanding. So the fifty percent meters thing, I know is very often not the case.
Peter, a takeaway, there is no such thing as free parking. Okay, somebody is going to pay. The question is, who's paying and how is paying?
Right, and one thing that we didn't talk about, uh, is how much of the city's off-street spots are, uh, reserved for lessies, um, which has a different calculation of the revenues than the patron on-street spots. So that's another thing that we don't have any decisions yet about, is optimal reallocation spots from lessies to meter, to fees to patrons. What is that balance that we might be missing that makes people feel there's a crunch at these specific times, when, when I go out, there's availability in another part of the city, a couple blocks down? Uh, you have been very patient back there.
I want to introduce myself, my name is Klaus Meiritz. I worked twenty-five years in tourist and economic development in Germany, specialized actually in open-air museums, specialized in development, small communities with these open-air museums. So it's very well-connected with economic development in little cities. And I'm here today because I read this article in the Tribune, and I went, uh, a little bit angry, uh, because it was against all what I'm believing in, what I saw it's functioning and what's not functioning. We have an economic crisis in rural America, especially Western PA. And I'm talking here about a German who settled here in America seven years ago. I'm living here in Meadville for five years now. We see in downtown a lot of shops standing empty. This is loss of revenue, this is loss of life quality, that's a lot of loss for our community. And as city council, as city government, I think it's important to support the economic development of the inner city. And I understand the tax revenue and our all-over situation and the budget makes us walking with, uh, shoes made of lead. I apologize if I'm very direct, we have another culture of talking in Germany, we are very effective, and we try to bring it to the point. Um, so, um, I might be offensive for some people. Um, that's my experience. The problem is, those little, little leverages, teeny-tiny leverage the city council has to support the economic development we have, they should be used. And parking lots is an amenity, we, the society, we, the community, are providing for downtown development and productivity. That's what we have to offer them, especially in times of crisis. We had the Neolithic Revolution, we had the Industrial Revolution, and now we are in the Walmart and Amazon Revolution. It kills downtowns, and we have to work hard to make that reverse, in reverse action. And we have some reverse, we have awesome shops with very signature offerings, like Purple Fox or, um, Indigo, and all those little fashion shops we have. And I think if we can help them, we should. We should not put a lot, another, let, let, um, shoe on them and on our development in the inner city. There should be another approach than even pitting people against each other by telling them, either you property owner with fifty thousand property value are paying for it, or the shop owners. That's nice, it's a very common, um, what's called, um, DVD and improv policy. The question is, we have a situation, we want a certain outcome, how we can manage that? And that's what I'm missing. I just hear a lot of budget, but no vision. And this downtown we have is, right now, still a treasure. We can have it worse, or we can have it better. It's, it's Titusville or Franklin, there we go, that's your decision now. But I was very upset reading this article with this little tiny thing, where just raising the, the fees, it makes it less attractive to go to the inner city and downtown. And my, uh, battle call here on this point is revive or die. And this is what I'm calling for. And if you want ideas how to manage parking, I have some. In Europe, we have different methods to do that. For instance, a parking disc. If I arrive in a parking lot, I put my time of arrival on the parking disc and put it in the, behind the screen. If the parking, um, meter, um, controller comes by, can see how it's just over an hour, he gets fined, revenue for the city.
Okay.
But it's, uh, having, um, uh, parking lots available for the business owners, so they can actually thrive.
Klaus, did you say disc?
Yeah, parking disc.
Okay.
You can actually punch it in and, and Google, look on images, you see pictures of them.
So, uh, creative solutions that we have not yet tried yet, over time, that's, might make a dent in this problem, first of all, thanks a bunch, Mike. We covered it, love it. No, what you brought up here is, I think, a good challenge that I hope we could end, we're coming out of time already, is take up. Because, yes, as you've seen, remember, like, the current rates, the current, uh, assemblage of parking systems and parking services that we have right now has not given us what we need to prepare for the next ten years, especially when there are looming costs that we know will be coming down the horizon. Can you take your challenge, and it's not a coincidence that you're around tables? Um, and possibly with those beside you, because in our time left, if you have thoughts, can you share them with each other around the tables, maybe, you know, five, ten minutes? I'd like to hear what you might have, um, either now or public comment, uh, later, about those new creative ideas that have been dwelling in your brain, but you have not been able to express them. Okay, can we, can we set a timer, five minutes? Remember, we have to get out of here by eight-twenty.
Peter, what if some of us still have questions?
Yes, there you go.
A lot of questions.
I think that's more important than having a roundtable discussion.
Yeah, questions are better than ideas.
I think there are a lot of folks here that may still have more questions.
We can put solutions on paper and send them to you, email them to you.
Wait, wait, hang on a second, what about those who don't have questions?
That do.
That do have questions?
That do still have questions. Rather than putting the remainder of the time on brainstorming, could, could folks still ask the questions they have?
Yeah, uh, I, I do wanna have some time to take up your challenge there, and then, um, let's see. Actually, who, who still has, you, you, three, three more, three more questions?
Five, six, seven.
Yeah, I know. So, also keeping in mind that I prepared all of this in the time span of one, for one hour and twenty minutes, and I don't have everything in front of me, so there may be some questions that we will write down, and I'll have to address them later. Okay, Zach in the back.
There were a lot of folks before me that had their answers, so I don't wanna...
I think you got a good question, let it go.
Yeah, you're the, I mean, you...
Well, I, first off, I wanna very clearly see if it's one of my bosses or here. I'm not speaking on behalf of my employer, I'm speaking as a city resident.
Well, same there.
Secondly, and secondly, I wanna very clearly, uh, thank the staff of the city and the, the individuals that put this together, because I know standing on the other end can be very daunting, so thank you. My question is very simple, and it's gonna be almost rhetorical in nature, but when the city calculates out your revenue, do you make more off of a parking lot? Or you make more off of a de, a development? Off of a building? Off of assessed value? Where do you get more revenue from?
We, we don't have land, yeah.
No.
I, I have an answer.
Okay.
There you go.
Right, so, the more development that occurs in the city, you get more revenue that way than necessarily collecting parking fees. And plugging and collecting for unused spaces, because if I read the article correctly, fifty percent of the leased spaces in parking lots are not being used consistently.
Again, that's averaged over a speckled amount of limited time, that doesn't record peak, that accords a lot of, but yeah, there's lots of asterisks, actually.
People are paying for that spot, whether they use it or not. Correct, but can we get more revenue off of the development that's in that spot instead?
Yes.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
We're having a big conversation about parking, when really, I think the conversation is, how should the city's land that we have limited be allocated to resources to create a budget that's sustainable for the city?
Hence why we built that six-story garage in two thousand four.
And also, uh...
But it doesn't seem like we had a need for that much parking anymore.
It's full.
Full.
Now, we might not be charging the correct rate for it.
Right.
The first floor is metered.
My understanding is that D P might not always be here, right? Like, they're, they're leased. A lot of those folks are...
Yeah, we got more than four of them.
Home, right? Like, the, the, the dynamics of how our economy is shifting, and so...
But you're right, they, they require two hundred and one spots, and that's what they're paying for.
Right.
So we have to provide.
But what I wanna articulate is, I think the larger conversation is that the land that we are using is not the most efficient way that we can talk about it.
Okay, so add that to the rest of your thoughts, please recall that, then... Please, uh, recall back in two thousand eight, like, the decision was made, that development of Erie Bank was more valuable to the parking fund than continuing to operate parking. Who said that in the back?
I, um, so, I hear a lot about the parking spots in the city. And frankly, I think that piggybacking on what Klaus said, maybe what Zach says, and others of us, you know, my sister and I own a building, we sunk a boatload into renovation, okay? Our whole idea is the revival of the town. And while I appreciate the need for parking all over the city, what I'd like to see is a microcosm of that, that takes a look just at the downtown development. We can't survive if we cannot draw folks into town. And frankly, if I have a customer who wants to go to lunch and shop, two hours doesn't cut it. Can I tell you how many times I've paid a parking ticket for somebody? It's not okay. And I paid for four spots in the garage. I am now paying two hundred and forty dollars a month, so my folks can park. We are not parking in front of our buildings. So what I'd love to see is a study simply of our primary business district. I don't have any magic answers right now, I really don't. But what I do see is that I don't, our customers are not gonna park on Pine Street. They're not, you know? And frankly, we have to think about the fact that up at Vernon, we are going to be faced with a bunch of big-box stores coming in, so it's no longer just Walmart that offers us a challenge for parking, it's gonna be TJ Maxx, it's gonna be...
Ew.
There's a place for all of us, ladies. But, but the point is that there's going to be free parking, there's going to be easy access. We're not offering that right now to our customers. Today, I wanted to put money in a meter, because I came back and I only needed to stay for an hour before I came here, right? There was a puddle I couldn't navigate, there was a snow pile I couldn't navigate, but if I didn't put a quarter in the meter, I was gonna get a ticket. We have bigger issues, folks. And I don't know what the answers are, but I think that we're running out of time because of what's gonna happen on the hill, and how do we keep our district attractive and vibrant and more growth? I don't wanna see the hill affect negatively on our community.
Okay, uh, last question.
Many municipalities have moved away from parking meters to pay-by-phone or pay-by-kiosk. Is that something that maybe the city could look into to see if that would, uh, do not bring cost and allow for a potential to raise, if you have to raise the amount, the parking cost less than going up a hundred percent, because right now you just have meters take quarters, the only next option, you have twenty-five cents an hour, is fifty cents an hour.
So there, if you look at the meters now, there is a pay-by-phone option, um, with an app that's only rolled out, I think, about two, three, no, more than that, about four months ago, um, as the cheaper replacement to the infrastructure needed for, uh, kiosk-type systems as a replacement for meters. So for those who like quarters and cash, can do that, and we're testing out and seeing how the pay-by-phone with the meter-easy company that we're using, uh, works in time.
Okay.
Great, okay.
There is a fee to use that, or break for using it?
Yes, that fee goes to the company...
Rena's got a good thing for you, she got an answer for you.
So if you, you can load, if you're someone who's constantly, uh, parking downtown, you can load the app up with... you can load the app up with ten dollars, fifteen, twenty, fifty dollars, whatever, and you will only pay that forty cent processing fee that one time, for as long as that money gets you, rather than every single individual time you park. Um, it doesn't solve all the issues, but that is an option that you can.
But how many people are aware of that?
Right, so that's part of the thing of spreading awareness about that, you can let your customers know. We'll let people know, 'cause I didn't even know that until.
Why is the city not responsible for that, your customers?
We, yes, we will absolutely post that out there, um, it's just I didn't even know that until yesterday, myself, so.
Okay, so question.
I really feel like we have time for one more, not for the patient.
Yeah, sorry.
This nice gentleman over here said that, you know, parking needs to be paid, and it's wanting to be paid by someone. You know what, I wholeheartedly agree, I got a ticket this past week. I zipped my lift, I pulled out my ten-dollar bill, and I went and I paid my ticket. Is there a way? That if you're only running in the store for a moment, is there a way? That if you're going to be somewhere, like, I'm from the chop shop. And when people come into our facility, they're in there for an hour and a half, two hours, two and a half hours. I'm right on the corner of Chestnut and Park Avenue. I can hold up to twenty people in my shop, where do I ask twenty people to park? When I'm having an event, where do I ask these people to park? Please, you know, you know, can, can reduce down, drive together. What do I do?
Uh, so there is, like, this is just my off, like, copant to that, but, or just, yeah, is that the five, the diamond here, five-hour meters, sort of two-hour meter thing, uh, applies.
So are all the meters going to five hours?
No, those meters haven't five hours for a long time. Turnover on Chestnut Street, it was strategized that if you park on Chestnut Street,
Right.
uh, the turnover for there and for the Academy Theater Lot is two hours, for a blocks walk, park at the diamond, and it's typically.
So I should ask my customers to park in one minute?
I, I, I got.
She has an amazing idea, this is a good, this is one.
Okay, so.
Just real quick, just to piggyback off of her and piggyback off of Sue, um, the downtown, can we go back and make Chestnut Street one-way and park on both sides?
Yes, I've heard that before as, as well. I, open answer, I, I, I don't know.
Do it.
Genuinely, decisions about, uh, any of these creative, more systematic transformations to the parking systems have not been made yet because of how many moving parts yet, and we're still waiting on think, uh, engineering reports about the remaining lifespan of the parking garage, which a decision on that has not yet been made. Hence, this. So everything is, uh, on the table. We know that the on-street meters, uh, tend to pay more for themselves than the, uh, cost of enforcement and personnel for that, because a lot of the expenses of that are cheaper and more paid than, say, as Zach brought up, a off-street parking lot is saleable land, where you cannot sell the land at the margin or shoulder of a road, and that there's more dedicated maintenance costs to that. So options are on the table, we have no time at all to do any roundtable stuff. So yeah, question in the back, thank you, Mark, for pointing, I can't see a lot of hands.
For a real quick, real quick question, so, the increase of fifty, the potential increase of fifty cents per meter, is that going to be decided before any of these are actually considered? Or is the potential disruption of our downtown economy going to happen before we can make a change outside of just increasing the parking fees? Or is it something that's already been decided and done?
I haven't decided on it, and, uh, when the proposal was brought towards city council, city council said, before we do any action on increasing meters, let's have a town hall and investigate the thoughts.
Peter, didn't you pass a budget with the increase in it? I'm looking right at it. So you, you did pass the budget with the parking fee in it?
Yes.
So, and, and I'll just, and I don't mean to interject, and I think thirty seconds is your time, but my, my point being is, many people on city council have used terminology kicking the can down the road towards county government, well, I'm gonna revert that on you a little bit. When you have infrastructure, you're responsible for ensuring you have money to repair said infrastructure. Our, our parking garage, which Mr. Groves has taken, uh, some attention to in regards to what the cost of bill and what it would be, uh, it, it needs two hundred thousand dollars of repair. We set that money aside, that's what we do. So when you kick the can down the road, when you guys wanna use terminology like that, in return, you've been here four years, this, this is a problem with infrastructure. But when you pass the budget, it says you've doubled it, that's what the fifty-two thousand dollars is. So either you do change the mileage, find some money that you guys will use to balance your budget that you won't have anymore, or you, or you bite the bullet and just admit that you guys were here on November seventh, is when you passed, when you talked about this budget first, in your first budget meeting, that number was in there. So my point about it is, this is January twenty-third, so I, I'm confused about the timing. Like why, why has it taken this long to sit in a room full of people and push them to eight-twenty to talk about something that you folks already passed? That's what's in there.
So I can't.
That's rhetorical, I just wanted to leave out that question.
So I can't explain all of that, except, um, chiming in, uh, if it wrong, is that the budget is not the specific commitment when it comes to passing of ordinances for increasing fees? That's a, that's a separate action that needs to happen outside of the budget. Timeliness of the budget was such that changing the budget and then passing, uh, a potential fee increase that was not in the budget versus passing the budget with that and not doing it, it's an accident timing, I don't know. Like, I don't wanna, I was just there at the public meeting, and, and.
So the budget passed upon, predicted a number of other there.
Something is to say, it's a done, it's a not done.
It's not, not.
So to, to, to explain to Eric, what happened there was, is that staff did suggest going to a quarter increase. That was presented to council, and they said, we really wanna study it. There was no reason for you to take it out of the budget, because the budget still is balanced without having the extra revenue.
Tim, I, I understand balancing budgets, but you're, you're showing revenue, that you're sitting right here today telling these folks that you haven't decided on, it's in your.
And we have, we have.
But, but you passed that budget, you, you have no more one-time money left.
We passed the budget that said, you estimate everything, Eric, there's everything in a budget estimated. So we estimated that there would be a quarter in it, and so that's what we did. So it shouldn't affect anything. If council decides not to do a quarter, we don't do it, and the budget still has enough money to proceed. Not as much as we'd like.
We want the library to invite us back again, so we should all.
I would recommend instead on January twenty-fifth at six to seven PM, there is an event about, uh, what is it, bird watching in winter.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I love these, so we need people to be in live here.